I call this meeting of the Upshur County Commission.
May you be welcome.
We will begin with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
We have a 9:15 presentation by, I'm sorry, I was just getting one tab lined up, and we'll begin with, and also Dr. Reed coming in at 9:30, and at 10 o'clock we must test the voting machines, we'll begin with our reading of the minutes from last meeting.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The County Commission of Upshur County, West Virginia, held their regular meeting at the Courthouse Amex on Thursday, April 24, 2014, at 9:00 a.m. J.C. Rafferty called the meeting to order. Bill President J.C. Rafferty, Commissioner Donnie Tenny, Commissioner Troy Brady, Commissioner Megan Pomeroy, County Administrator, Carrie Wallace, Assistant County Administrator, and Evelyn Dinkwasser, Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. After reading of the minutes on motion by Donnie Tenny, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the special meeting minutes of April 15, 2014, April 11 as submitted. After reading of the minutes on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Donnie Tenny, the Commission approved regular meeting minutes of April 17, 2014, as submitted. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Donnie Tenny, the Commission approved temporary part-time employment of the following as early voting clerks, Beatrice Adams, Irene Andrew, Hannah Wentz, Judith Miles, Philip Murray, Betty Hebner, Janet K. Wilson, William Shannon, James Vance, Catherine Vance, Bill Rippon, Margaret Neely, Betty Oldacre, and Philip Stacker, as requested by Debbie Becker-Wilke, Upshur County Clerk. Effective dates of employment will be April 30, 2014, through May 10, 2014, at the rate of $7.25 per hour. J.C. Rafferty reviewed correspondence from the Buchanan Academy Elementary School PTO, requesting a donation for a fundraiser at Rappel. After discussion on motion by Donnie Tenny, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved a donation of 10 one-day passes to the Upshur County Recreational Park Pool. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Donnie Tenny, the Commission approved the reappointment of James Holland III as board member of the Upshur County Solid Waste Authority as recommended by Bill Smith, Director. Mr. Holland's term will expire on June 30, 2018. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Donnie Tenny, the Commission approved the resignation of Jessica Bailey, Deputy Assessor, effective April 25, 2014. J.C. Rafferty reviewed a request from Steve Linder, E-9111 Communications Senate Director, for the advancement of part-time dispatcher Kristen Hall to the position of full-time dispatcher. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Donnie Tenny, the Commission approved the request of evidence of current rate of pay, $10 per hour, effective April 20, 2014. J.C. Rafferty reviewed the request from Steve Linder, E-9111 Communications Senate Director, for the approval of the contract for two SIRN radios and associated equipments as discussed at the April 17 Commission meeting to be awarded to Lloyd's Electronics. Mr. Linder and Dr. Burnside, Telecommunications Advisor, have reviewed the bid in the amount of $19,552.77 to make sure that it met all specifications. No other bids were received. After discussion on motion by Donnie Tenny, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the bid contract to be awarded to Lloyd's Electronics as submitted. Megan Pomeroy was requested to follow up with the contract preparation. J.C. Rafferty reviewed the following for your information items. Number one, Upshur County E-9111 Communication Center report, March 2014, as listed. Number two, Office of the Upshur County Assessor, job posting for Deputy Assessor. Number three, correspondence from Delegate Smith to Governor Tomlin concerning the Upshur County Youth Camp Bridge. Number four, agendas and/or notice of meetings as listed. Five, committee members and/or financial reports as listed. Six, meetings as listed. Seven, appointments needed or upcoming as listed. The Commission recessed at 9:25 a.m. The Commission reconvened at 9:30 a.m. J.C. Rafferty opened a public hearing at 9:30 a.m. to hear comments and concerns from customers of the Alkins Road Public Service District concerning the Small Cities Block Grant application and the amount of $1,500,000 for the Alkins Road PSD Water Extension Project. Harry Smith, Region 7 Planning Development Council Representative, Michael Johnson, Chapman Technical Group Consultant, and Kerry Wagner, Alkins Road Public Service District Representative, provided data and statistics concerning the project and answered questions from residents. The public hearing adjourned at 10 a.m. The Small Cities Block Grant application will be placed on next week's agenda for action. That was only a report, only, not on the agenda. J.C. Rafferty recused himself from review of the James W. Curry Scholarship applications due to a family relationship with one of the applicants. Donnie Tenny and Troy Brady reviewed the applications, which had personal information obscured to ensure anonymity of the applicants. After discussion on motion by Donnie Tenny, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved application number three for the male recipient and application number nine for the female recipient of the scholarship awards. The names of the scholarship winners will be announced at the high school awards ceremony at a future date. The Commission has commented on the difficulty of choice due to the high qualifications of so many of the applicants. The Commission recessed at 10:00 or 5:00 a.m. The Commission reconvened, and reconvened at 10:10 in the downstairs hallway of the County Clerk's office for the testing of voting machines and equipment. After discussion on motion by Donnie Tenny, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved and authorized the Commission's assignment of voting machine and equipment certification. The Commission approved all invoices for payment. The Commission approved all vacation orders. The Commission approved the following settlements as listed. The Commission approved the following disenterations and/or refunds as listed. The Commission approved the following request to attend meeting for Commission employing employees as listed. The Commission approved the following consolidation of land tracts as listed. With note for the business, on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Donnie Tenny, the Commission meeting adjourned at 12:30 p.m.
Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Thank you, Jack.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as read? If not, I would request a motion to approve them.
So moved. Second.
Having been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries. Thank you again, Jack. We have a 9:15, about three minutes before our first presentation, which again will be Carrie Smith from the Alkins Public Road Service, well, she's from Region 7, will be for a grant for the Alkins Public Service District. We'll go down to items for discussion. First item will be an authorization for signatures for the Safe Structures and Sites letter sent to Larry Colver. That's a letter dated, we have not got a date on it, we have the first page here. Stand corrected, dated May 1, 2014, to Mr. Larry Colver, P.O., Fox 126, Adrian, West Virginia, advising that there has been correspondence sent by the Safe Structures Board on July 23, 13, September 13, 2013, October 6, 2013, and December 16, 2013, and that as a result of inaction on the part of Mr. Colver to respond to that, the Upshur County Commission is now requesting that he make certain corrective actions in compliance with the ordinance. Those be any corrective health and safety hazards, including not limited to removal and proper disposal of debris, trash, junk vehicles, removal of proper disposal of environmental hazards, mineral demolition, remove any dwellings or other buildings which would cause structures to be unsafe, dangerous, detrimental to public safety or welfare. And I would offer, I would request authorization for the Commission to sign that communication to Mr. Colver, to have a motion to approve those signatures.
Moved. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries. Next, we have a request for board appointed by the Upshur County Convention Visitors Bureau of Directors, requesting that Gene Thorne be appointed as the County Commission representative for that board, there being a vacancy, and the current representative on that board wishes not to serve a second term. Gene Thorne has been recommended to serve that term beginning July 1 of this year. Is there a motion to approve or recommend Mr. Thorne for that position?
So moved. Second.
Having been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries. Next, we have a approval from the Commission for a request for approval for procurement log and reimbursement forms used by county personnel. Would County Administrator Megan Pomeroy explain that?
Sure. It's basically, these are forms that we use for bookkeeping purposes when someone asks for reimbursement for travel, for instance, or meals, and our procurement log, which is what we use for our government purchasing card. During audits, they've asked that we make sure that we include invoices, itemized receipts, all of that. So we've just kind of edited it a little bit to add checkboxes so people can make sure that they get every little piece of information that they need to attach to that. That's on the procurement log. On the expense reimbursement log, we just added some language in there asking that they include agendas, proof of the meetings that they attend, that kind of thing. So just kind of, it's already information that we've asked them to provide, but we just kind of made it more clear.
And a little bit more user-friendly, as I know from previous forms.
Okay.
Having heard that explanation on that request for approval, is there a motion to approve the procurement log and reimbursement form?
So moved. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries. Next, we have an approval for a compliance dashboard subscription, which assists with healthcare act notifications. Again, Ms. Pomeroy, if you--
Sure. This is a program which is available to us through the County Commissioner's Association, and we've seen demonstrations, and we think it'd be extremely helpful. I think a few of you may have seen it as well. Basically, it helps us keep on top of the notifications that are required through the Affordable Care Act, as well as HIPAA, OSHA, a lot of different notification requirements that we have, and kind of consolidated it in one spot. And then, at the end of the year, we can print out a report showing everything that we did, and that we actually complied with all the requirements that we have. So it would be very useful to help keep us updated, and also for reporting if we are ever audited on these notices, to have proof of that.
Compliance, especially with new healthcare laws and other restrictions that are thrown upon the Commission and other government agencies, private business, it's important that we maintain those records in a proper manner so that reports can be generated to the federal agencies to ensure that we comply. Based on that, I would request that the motion to approve the adoption of that compliance dashboard.
So moved. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries. We now will have Ms. Smith present. Region 7, we have the request for approval of the grant for the Alkins Public--
Yeah, I'm Carrie Smith of Region 7. I was here last week for the public hearing for information. It's required of Small Cities Block Grants to have a public hearing, and I'm here this week to present the resolution for authorizing the filing of the Small Cities Block Grant application for your sponsorship of Alkins Road PSD for their water line extension project.
Thank you. Excellent presentation last week by--
Today.
Certainly, certainly, in today's day, day and time, good water, drinkable water, is something that many of us take for granted, but not all residents of Upshur County, and especially rural areas, have that luxury, that is a luxury. So I would move that the Commission approve the submission of the grant.
Having been-- Second.
Having been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries. We have 10 minutes yet before our next presentation, Dr. Smith, or Dr. Reed, excuse me. I'm developing you from an engineer to a doctor. The next item then will be for information item, will be correspondence from the Division of Highway, Stateway Transportation Improvement Programs, STIP. And basically, this is, as they indicated, is a, the state transportation improvement program, STIP, is a financially constrained document. Now, what that means, I presume, is they haven't got much money. Required to show plan federal highway administration and federal transit administration expenditures for federal fiscal year 2014 to 2019. One of the requirements for funding any project with FHWA or FTA audit funds or funds is that each proposed project undergo a public review and comment period. Comment period for this submission, a letter dated April 17, 2014, from the West Virginia Department of Transportation Division of Highways, is May 6, 2014. After perusing the submission, it is apparent that there are no projects for Upshur County listed in this submission. However, I do know that there are several canceled projects, which tells me that there is a funding issues. I would translate that to be a funding issue by the state to fund some of these projects. But in any event, it is presented for public review, public comment, and anyone wishes to do so, they may do so by contacting the Department of Transportation, West Virginia Division of Highways Program Division in Charleston. We have these contact information here at the County Commission, so you may contact our administrators and receive that information. Next, we have our NACO prescription drug program report for March this year, indicating basically that there was cost savings to anyone using the NACO card, which is a free card. Anyone wishes to receive one, average price savings was $6.79 or 16% of the cost of purchasing prescription drugs. We continue to try to promote this card for people that wish to, wish to take advantage of that. It's cost-free, it's open to anyone. Okay, next we go. Correspondence and First Energy Tree Trimming Program. And the First Energy Corporation, by letter dated April 17, 2014, has advised Mon Power and Botanic Edison Power have announced a new tree trimming program. Will replace tree trimming and right-of-way vegetation maintenance on a five-year cycle through 2019, with a four-year cycle possible in future years, once initial work is evaluated. The cost to both those energy companies is $75 million annually during the initial five-year cycle of vegetation management. I believe that most of us that went through last year's duratio and other snowstorm that we had, I think it was October last year, two years ago, a year ago, experienced lots of power outages, and even for extended periods of time, a week or longer in some parts of the county. By addressing this right-of-way issue, we hope that such natural occurrences will not impact as negatively on the customers for electricity and power. So I would commend those energy companies for their efforts in that part. Next, we have correspondence from State Senator Greg Tucker to Ron Woodin, West Virginia Department of Transportation District Engineer, relative to the Upshur County Youth Camp That was a letter dated April 24, and basically, Senator Tucker notes that the County Commission has requested funding for repair of the Youth Camp Bridge, which is the only bridge in Upshur County, only by the county, and that the deficiencies that were noted in the engineering report indicators a $12,000, basically $12,000 necessary to correct those deficiencies. He has advised us in a letter that Governor Tomlin has approved a grant that he requests him to run $5,000 toward those repairs, and he further supports Upshur County's request of the state to take over maintenance of that structure. We thank Mr. Tucker, Senator Tucker, for that support. Last, not lastly, but next, we have a correspondence from West Virginia Strawberry Festival regarding opening fair ceremonies, which will occur on Saturday, May 10, at Jabo Park. And then, lastly, but not, whatever the term of lastly, or whatever, we have the notification of the Upshur County Firefights Association Car Show Music Door Prizes on May 3, 2014, at Jenkins Ford. Do you have any comment on that, Jerry, Mr. Kimble, as for a proponent?
I'm in or consider on that. They, everything's pretty well ready to go. I don't know, they're trying to round up some music for the show, but other than that, I think everything else is pretty well ready.
Thank you. Seems like car shows in this area, and ones we do have, are well attended.
Yeah, they, we're having a pretty good response.
And anticipate a lot of people like to--
I've had people in the last few days call me from Glendale and Fairmont about kind of to refer to--
Very good. Next, we have agendas, a notice of meetings, any inquiries or questions from the Commissioners on agendas. We have minute meetings submitted to us, any comments from any of the commissioners? Three seconds. I'll reconvene the County Commission meeting for May 1, 2014. It's now 9:30. We have on our agenda Dr. Joseph Reed, Upshur County Health Board, making a presentation on Clean Indoor Air Policy. Dr. Reed?
Thank you. I just wanted to bring to your attention the recent action, April 15, of board health to include the e-cigarettes or vaporization units in the clean indoor air rules and regulations of the previous asking part of the county. Wish to acknowledge the four runner action of the city, including the devices in the exclusion of parks and recreation facilities of the city, and also the action and the efforts of the tobacco collision in promoting this idea. The state health department also suggests this. We have in hand reasoning that I presented to the Board of Health to back this policy, and will be briefly that. Lack of regulation of products, the unknown safety of many products, the addictive properties of nicotine and the toxicity of ethyl alcohol and perhaps other ingredients maybe in these products, difficulty of separating these products in enclosed environment from prohibited tobacco smoking, practices of some to load even illicit drugs into devices, the suspected bleeding of some, especially young people who are serious to tobacco and drug use. At our hand, there are concerns for not banning this, further infringement of private rights, and second, the lack of proof that they are harmful. Because of these above reasons, we're banning electronic cigarettes, vaporization units in public places in the youth. I recommend to the Board of Health, and after public invitation for comments, which we received, then, the Board of Health on April 15 did pass the addition of the Clean Indoor Air Policy to include these e-cigarettes and vaporization units. You have a copy of that policy before you go, please, this time. While I have the fore, I'd just like to draw to your attention that our Clean Indoor Air rules include the vehicles which are operated by county, by the city, by public or by companies, where there's more than one person using that vehicle, and encourage you as others to encourage that action for your employees. Again, I'd like to acknowledge the Exquisite City and the tobacco collision in promoting the ideas as well as the state department and federal government, which has now taken action, early action, to regulate these products, and the state has included prohibition of sale of these to under 18. There's blank in your form of the, I'm filling in. Thanks, Jim. Any questions I can answer?
I have a hand in the back by Mr. Rick Edwards.
Yes, Doctor, what I would like to find out is, and I understand that there's an issue with the enforcement of this ordinance. I've had plenty of our local establishments that still have smoking indoors, and there have been no issues or no citations done with that. I'm afraid that, again, this is just another waste of an ordinance that will not be done. But what I'd like to do is bring to your attention, actually, is your Part Code 100 of the workplace, Section 100, Title, Number M. What I would like to do is, as you keep telling us, the cities make sure that there is not any outdoor smoking, that their facilities are any of the public issues. Well, I'll bring to your attention that under Section M, smoking also includes the use of any electronic smoking device which creates a vapor in any manner or in any form. What I would like to bring to your attention is that during the concerts, we have outdoor fog machines. They have ethyl alcohol. You are now poisoning your citizens, or at least the city is, or West Virginia Strawberry Festival. That includes Halloween, when you have the fog machines, ethyl alcohol. I assume you're going to be enforcing those too.
Tell me again, the machines?
The fog machines.
Okay.
It's an electronic smoking device. That's ethyl alcohol, that's what makes the fog.
I was not aware of that.
And that would be indoors at any concert, that would be outdoors at any concert, or anytime you have one of those. So I bring that to your attention, the Health Board.
Thank you.
Mr. Sir.
Is there any alternative substance that could be used to do the same thing?
Dry ice.
Thanks for the suggestion.
I do have one other concern that I want to bring to you. I understand that the Health Department is looking at the smoking, and I can appreciate that, but I think it's about time maybe our Health Department look at our energy drinks, our soda consumption, our caffeine consumption, and our sugar consumption. Obesity being one of the highest issues in this state, I would really think that the Health Department would start addressing some of those issues. I think smoking's on the way out, I think the other issues are on the way in. Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anything you said to anyone else present? Dr. Reed?
That's all I have.
Tim Higgins.
I just want to address the issue of enforcement. Identify yourself.
Tim Higgins, I'm sorry, American Lung Association of the State of West Virginia. As far as the enforcement goes, any citizen can make a complaint to, it's turned into the Health Department, it is up to the sanitarian at that point to investigate, and only the sanitarian can write a citation at that point. A business gets three citations. When they're caught, then it gets turned over to the prosecutor. So these establishments, as you say, state that are continuing to smoke, they know what the vehicle looks like, when it's coming, they have surveillance cameras out in the parking lot, they put the ashtrays away. If they're not there, the sanitarian can't do anything about it. So just, that's, that's the reality. You know, is there a fix for that? So far, we have not found one.
I would argue that it'd be obvious when you walk into an establishment that's been smoking, you could smell the smoke. Obviously, that's an issue that smokers, non-smokers have, and I might add that while I was in Fairmont State, during class times, during lectures, I have witnessed a professor smoking an e-cigarette, and students smoking e-cigarettes during class time. I don't know if that's something that happens at our Wesleyan College, I can't say that, but I personally witnessed that on campus during class inside. I think if our educated folks, our professors are doing that and setting that example, then again, the question should be, is this actually something that is as dangerous as being perceived by our Health Department? being perceived by our health department?
As I indicated, part of the problem is that these have not been tested. We know that many of them have nicotine, which is a very addicting substance, and the other questions that are raised that contribute. For your information, the hospital is campus-free, tobacco. Wesleyan, we're working on it. Core Hearts, as I understand, is also tobacco-free.
Tobacco-free, not nicotine-free.
That's right.
We've got to make sure we distinguish between the two. One is nicotine, one is tobacco. We can't lump them both in the same category. You're, it's just as comparable as comparing coffee to our energy drinks, caffeine, caffeine. It's like quite a few other examples of unhealthy ways that we do, but you're just using nicotine and tobacco in the same sentence. It's not the same thing. Am I correct in that?
You're correct.
Thank you.
But tobacco does contain nicotine, and part of the dilemma with that is that that's the addicting part.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. And I want to say again, I appreciate all the work that you do in the community and the health department. I'm just saying there are a few issues with this ordinance that I take umbrage with and I argue with. And I think in this case, of course, the county's going to do what they want, I just want to make sure there are concerns from other citizens out there to address this, even though they weren't written in. Thank you.
Is the, the purpose of the electronic cigarettes, is that to help people quit smoking regular cigarettes? Is that the?
That's, that's what some people say they use them for. The evidence that I've been able to find, best evidence I've been able to find is that at best, it's no better than the cigarette gum or the nicotine patches.
Is that something that's, is it because of the, of the exposure of other people to the nicotine, is that the concern of the electronic cigarettes, same as regular cigarettes? Is that the concern is, is the damage to nearby people?
All of the six.
Secondary smoke?
All of the six things I listed in your form there and I read are concerns.
Right, but if I heard you correctly, on the, it's against the law to smoke if you're driving a truck if there's someone with you, but if, if you're alone.
If it's, if it's a company truck and it has a logo on the side of it in Upshur County, that is considered an enclosed space in a business. Nobody can smoke in it.
Okay, was a situation where, unless I misunderstood you, it seemed like there was one situation where you could smoke if you were alone, or did I misunderstand it?
It was with county and city vehicles. That's what he was talking about.
If you have your own private vehicle.
Okay, but if it's a city vehicle or any kind of a company vehicle, you can't smoke even if you're alone?
Or county vehicle.
Right. It's only if, in a private vehicle, so, so if someone's driving in a private vehicle and has someone with them, it's against the law for them to smoke in a private vehicle?
No, that's not right. That's not included. It's only companies and city and state vehicles operating in Upshur County.
Okay, so I still don't understand what the driving alone or being able to smoke if you're driving alone, and what does that pertain to?
If you have a company vehicle, then there are more than one person who may operate that vehicle. So if you're smoking, if one person is smoking in it, then the next person gets in, may be exposed to secondhand smoke. It's, actually, it covers any company vehicle that is operated in the county. It doesn't matter if it's the same person that operates that vehicle all the time. There is no smoking in that vehicle while it's operated in Upshur County.
Okay, so I still don't understand, what's the situation where if you're alone, you can't smoke?
That was probably a mis, misstatement.
Okay, so that's not part of it. Did I misunderstand that part?
Yeah, as I said, if it's a company vehicle, has a logo on it, then there's no smoking in that vehicle, period.
Whether you're alone or there's.
Whether you're alone or you've got two or three people in it, which is not.
What about parent and child in a private vehicle?
That's not covered.
Not here, but it is, it is covered in other states. That is an issue with a child in a car with an adult smoker, and it's not allowed, and you can't get a ticket. But if I might address Donnie's question, it's actually the tobacco coalition that came together and decided to make the e-cigarettes, not because of trying to stop people from smoking, but it's a way to get the nicotine without endangering other people's lives. The issue with the smoking of tobacco cigarettes, or even cigars, or anything that admits the tobacco with the wrapper, that was the real danger that everybody was concerned with, with cancer and secondhand smoke. Once that happened, though, and the tobacco coalition or the tobacco companies, Big Tobacco, came out with this new way to give the nicotine as a way that would not harm anybody else, this is when the opponents decided, okay, well, now that that's been covered, let's just go ahead and cover this whole nicotine issue while we're at it too. So I would argue, if you're going to get rid of nicotine, get rid of caffeine, get rid of sugar, get rid of fatty foods. That's just my opinion, but to answer Donnie's question, it's Big Tobacco that came up with this to save secondhand smoking. It has nothing to do with stopping cigarettes, smoking, it just happens to be one way to do that.
And there's no proof of that. There is some proof of it, that it helps, there is no proof that it doesn't help. There are currently independent studies taking place, this will take some years before the studies are completed. So in order for what we felt as a tobacco prevention coalition was to err on the side of cautiousness, and that's why we presented this along with Dr. Reed's health, the health department, to include it in the clean indoor air policy. It's, it's a matter of perception. If it was just a device to deliver nicotine, and if, once it becomes a vapor and it is expelled from the person, it's still, it's nicotine in the air. That doesn't go away. It's not like all 100% of the nicotine product is consumed in that person's body. It is in the air. So there is no, and again, perception. If that was the case, why this electronic device, have an LED light at the end of it to make it look like a cigarette, burning cigarette, when it's puff? There's no reason for that LED light. Perception. Okay, it has one, hey, I'm an adult, I'm smoking. So.
Any further comments? If not, thank you very much, Dr. Reed.
One other peripheral thing from my previous presentation, request to address the National Guard relative to tobacco-free campus at the new convention center at the Scottish Industry. Apparently, this has not made awareness to the local people at this point, maybe need for some political inquiry to the top higher levels, but certainly your letters are help, have been helpful in the long process, and I appreciate that.
We have submitted a letter adopting the recommendations, but as you understand, we have no enforcement authority over the state national guard.
I understand that fully.
That is a decision that their higher command or whatever authority must make that decision.
And that's what I'm saying, that the suggestion yesterday in the meeting about the convention center with local guard people suggested some political input from higher up may be helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My next item on the agenda is a public test of the voting machines, which we conducted at 10 o'clock with the Upshur County clerk. His responsibility is your mayor or else somebody going prison time, early voting. So I presume that that will not be happening where it was last time, because that is where the early voting machines are, so it'll be in the basement. So therefore, if there's no additional business pending before the commission this time, I'll recommend we go into the general, or recess, excuse me.
Captain, come.
As you may.
I was at the fire department the other night here in Buckham. Attend the meeting of the Upshur County Firefighters Association, and there was a call coming in to the 911. The, they tried to direct somebody out, I don't know which department it was, but the radio in the room there went completely static. I mean, just, you couldn't hear nothing. Well, they ended up, they had to turn the radio speaker down so that we could discuss what we were. And it was brought to many nasal bronchial attention, that that's why they cannot hear one another out in the outlying areas. And I said something to one of the firemen, and they said that there had been letters sent to, who I do not know about this situation. And I was wondering, you know, had anybody approached you all about it? Have you heard it?
I believe, I believe, if we're talking issue, that is a telephone line that runs out to the tower that is not, not operating properly. The bids, which we accepted last week, I believe, for the console and the radios that we discussed in today's meeting, will address that issue and that will, and that will, should become a moot point once these radios and consoles are, they are.
The new ones.
The new ones that are, I'm not talking about the handheld, I'm talking about console radios that are going to be installed in 911 center that will be digital, and I think will no longer have to rely on a telephone line that runs out to Tomlinville Tower. I believe that is the crux of the problem.
I knew that there'd been a letter addressed to Steve Laker, but I didn't know if anything had been brought before you.
It's been, it's been a while trying to get the grant money and everything put together, but that has, that has, I believe that is the problem you're discussing, believe that to be the case.
But anytime that there's a call, nobody can contact anybody else. I mean, it makes it tough one.
I understand. But I think that matter is being resolved as we speak.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, then we will recess and go downstairs at 10 o'clock.